...was posted by Constable Shawn Joyce on May 24, 2010. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. Before I continue, I cannot have people standing in the rear. I have asked the police to please not permit that. We either have to sit down in here or we have to sit down next door. It has to do with counting the votes accurately. It also has to do with the fire laws. So please, if you stand there, we're going to ask you to move. For this meeting, I have appointed the following people as tarrack tellers. Marilyn Hunt is on the left, we're going to count the left side. Bruce Lefebvre is going to count the middle back. Is going to be the counter in the cafeteria. They have been sworn in by Town Clerk Janet Tracy. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, the Town's General Bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. While the Town Bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied on the volume, town meeting time, as the standard for conduct at Lakeville Town Meetings. It is my intention to continue this precedent. You will note that two microphones have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition for the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name, and if you would like to identify your address, please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating the motion, please present it to the moderator so that the clerk will have it as part of the official record of the meeting. For people who are in the cafeteria, if you wish to speak, you must move through to this room to the microphone. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone can speak. Generally, that has not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving if I find that the speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion an opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the speaker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. In the case of zoning articles, which I do not believe we have this evening, I will seek the report of the Planning Board and receive its report of its public hearing. Then any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. When the motion comes to a vote, and this special, I will ask that you hold up either your blue or your orange card issued to each registered voter when you arrived this evening and were checked in. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there is a counted vote, I will ask you to hold up your voting card and keep it elevated so that the teller can see it and count the vote in your section. You're a full house, so you're going to have to be patient. The use of the voting card will assure that only the voters of registered eligible voters are counted. I would like to remind you that no food or drink is permitted in the auditorium save clear water. Before we begin the special town meeting, I would like to call your attention to those residents of Lakeville who are active in town government and who have passed away since our last town meeting. They are Lincoln Maxim, who was a member of the Board of Fire Engineers and a call fireman, and John B., who was a member of about nine different organizations and committees and was wiring inspector for the town of Lakeville for 38 years. What I am going to ask you to do is to now stand while I ask for a moment of silence in their memory, and then remain standing after the moment of silence and honor our country by saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of what which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Finally, I would like to introduce those on the stage so that you may know if they start to speak who they are and what they are doing on the stage. To my left, Janet Tracy, Town Clerk; Rita Garbutt, Town Administrator; Rich Bowen, Town Council; Derek Maxey, Selectman; Nancy Yates, Selectman; Stephen Oliver, Selectman; Mike Petruza, Finance Committee; Melissa Hopkins, Finance Committee; Ted Bun, Finance Committee; Norman Oral, Finance Committee; Don Healy, Finance Committee; and Cindy McCray, Town Accountant. Before I continue, everyone should have a copy of the Town Warrant. If you do not have a copy, raise your hand and the teller will get one to you. You should have received it when you checked in. I am hoping we haven't run out. Counters, please take a look and get a number. While that's happening, since we have a few procedural votes, I'm going to go to the procedural votes not to waste time. A procedural vote is a vote by a town meeting to do something that pretty much is standard. And we're going to have three of them. I'm going to make a suggestion for each. I'm going to ask that the motion be so moved and seconded. I'm going to ask for a vote. The first procedural vote is to move the reading of the warrant. There's no discussion. All in favor, please raise your hands, your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no cards upstanding. It's unanimously passed. The second procedural article has to do with allowing certain people who are not citizens of the town of Lakeville to speak. We have five people. Frank Cisinelli, President of Cisco; Chuck Fraser, VP Operations of Cisco; Lynn Takarzik, Government and Sentences Consultant; John McCarthy, Superintendent of Schools; and Chris Peck, Lieutenant of Streets. Does anyone object to their speaking? I see no cards. All in favor of allowing these people to speak, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. They shall be allowed to speak if so asked. The third is the following. If two-thirds vote is required by statute, the moderator be authorized to declare a two-thirds vote in the same manner as a majority vote is declared, provided however that if the vote is so declared as immediately questioned by seven or more voters, the moderator shall verify it by taking account. In other words, I can ask for a two-thirds vote, and if it looks like it's a two-thirds vote, I can so declare. But if seven people stand up and say, "I object, I want to count," we'll have a count. Does everyone understand that? All in favor of this procedural motion, raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see none opposed. I'm going to wait for the next door. Thank you. They're all sitting there, thank you. Working out the buzz. Does everyone who needed a warrant have one? We have three people over here still need a special warrant. Special, I have a special, I have a special. We'll worry about the animal when we get there. Okay, we're set to begin, I believe. Everyone's got a copy of the special warrant? No, we still have one over here. Three over here. Three and a waving hand over here. Special? Okay, what's that? Share? Article 1.
I move that the town vote to transfer and/or appropriate available funds and service sums of money in order to defray unanticipated costs for fiscal year 2010 for various accounts in the general fund and all as set forth on the document entitled Article 1, Special Town Meeting Transfers, June 7, 2010.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it?
Um, I'm ready.
Usually you read the transfers. Would you do so?
Yeah, I'm going to read the transfer. This is a housekeeping article. At the end of the year, sometimes there are funds that were overspent and funds that were underspent. To balance everything out, to balance our budget. So the transfers appropriated from the reserve fund, $21,890. Other general government prior year expense, $2,000. Other general government continuing disclosure, $8,500. Unemployment, town and school, $104, 711. Debt service, $1,300. Employee group benefits, $59,500. Animal control expenses, $5,000. Property and liability expense, $5,000. Insurance recovery, $139,407. Reserve for further appropriation, $25,000. Reserve for further appropriation from the sale of a ladder truck, $3,000. Reserve for appropriation from the sale of highway surplus equipment, $6,000. That money totals $381,308, which was transferred to. Snow and ice wages and expenses, $111,200. Special needs added district tuition and transportation, $63,000. Legal fees, $6,000. Court assessment, $1. Historic library expenses, $3,000. Tax code foreclosure, $5,200. Animal control wages, $12,000. School expense, we need a new hot water heater, $7,500. Water infrastructure stabilization fund, $139,407. Stabilization funds for debt service, $25,000. Fire department expense, replacing 1962 hoses, $3,000. Highway department expense, new mower, $6,000. For a total of $381,308.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded and as indicated, it's a housekeeping article. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You're going to have to put it really close to you.
I don't think...
You don't like the wrong stuffs. Does anyone care to speak to this article? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This is going to require a two-thirds, but I've got power now. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article 1, please raise your cards. Mr. Hopkins, what breeds your room? Thank you. I declare it passed by unanimous vote. Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, we have a place holder for this one. I move that the town vote to, A, approve a tax increment financing TIP plan and agreement pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40, Section 59, between Cisco Boston LLC Company and the town of Lakeville Town for property located at 43 Main Street shown on assessor's map, block 60, block 7, lot 1, the Main Street property, which TIP plan and agreement provide for real estate tax exemptions over a 13-year period at exemption rate schedule set forth therein substantially in the form on file with the board of selectmen and the town clerk, subject to approval by the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, EACC. B, approve an application to the EACC for a certified expansion project on the Main Street property by a company pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 23A, Section 3 Abs, substantially in the form on file with board of selectmen and the town clerk. C, authorize the board of selectmen to execute the TIP agreement and approve submission to the EACC of the TIP plan and certified expansion project application and any necessary documents relating thereto, and to take such other actions as are necessary or appropriate to implement those documents. D, authorize the board of selectmen to submit all necessary documents to the EACC under the Economic Development Incentive Program for approval and designation of the Main Street property as an economic opportunity area pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 23A, Section 3E. E, take any such other and further action as may be necessary or appropriate to carry out the purposes of this article.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Thank you. Do you wish to speak to the article, Nancy?
Um, I would like to introduce the Cisco people. At this point, we're going to do a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, before we begin the PowerPoint, and we're going to do the best we can to project this into the other room because we have both audio and visual in the other room, but we'll do the best we can. The PowerPoint is not a long PowerPoint, but we're not going to have questions during the PowerPoint. We'll have questions afterwards. So we're going to let them produce the PowerPoint as per effort to answer this article, and then we'll get the Finance Committee's recommendation, and then we will open it up to the general public. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ready to start, Cisinelli. I'm the President of Cisco Boston. Before I start, I'd like to thank the board of selectmen for their support, the Finance Committee, the TIP team, the local officials, the residents, business community, attended the admissions sessions, the Cranberry Chamber of Commerce, and Rotary Club. I'd like to give you a little bit of overview of who Cisco Boston is. Cisco Boston goes back to 1858, but I'm going to fast forward to 1963. I don't think you want to hear all the little detail behind the company. It's a local company. In 1963, Paul Callett brought E.T. Smith and Hall together to form Hall Smith. A few years later, Cisco got involved, and we became Hall Smith Cisco. We are a distributor. We do not manufacture anything. We distribute food to restaurants, hotels, healthcare, education facilities. Some of the facilities that we deliver to, for example Fireside Grill, Dave's Diner, Fenway Park, Patriots Place, Mass. General. We do a lot of schools, colleges, Boston University, Austin College, Harvard University, and so on and so forth. The company is on the forefront of the latest and greatest because we need to be the leader in the industry. We're very sustainable. We spend a lot of time and monies with the local growers. For example, we do a lot of business with Ocean Spray. I go back to 1979 when I first started with Cisco here in Norton. And at the time, we had a farm in Dayton called Illen Hollow, which to this day, we still do business with them after 31 years. We breed farms, and we basically throughout New England, we do business with over 300 farms, local farms. Again, we are a distributor. We do not manufacture anything. We distribute food. Chuck?
Good evening. My name is Chuck Fraser. I'm the Vice President of Operations with Cisco Boston. I'm going to talk a little bit about our project. We are currently located in Norton, Massachusetts. We have a 480,000 square foot facility, which we have outgrown. Cisco Boston is a 24/6 operation. We are a warehouse and distribution center, as Fred mentioned. We are 24/6. We work Sunday night through Friday. We have conducted a site search all over Massachusetts and outside of Massachusetts to try to find a new location for our building. We've been on site search for about 14 months and it's been exhausting. We did identify and are focusing on the former Lakeville Hospital, as been mentioned earlier. And we have several sites that we are still working with, both in and out of Massachusetts, but our primary location is the one we're speaking of. I'm off the slide, huh? I got it. I got it. Sorry, I was off one slide. We are proposing a 650,000 square foot distribution center, which will be warehouses, dry, refrigerated, and frozen food, and also contain offices for our onsite facility. We plan to explore whatever means are necessary to help control the noise. In our current facility, we've done a lot with earth and burns, and the building is designed to contain the sound within. I know there's been a lot of concern about sound. As you probably saw on the lobby, this is a rendering of what our building will look like. This is an actual picture of a Cisco building that was built in Tennessee. And as you can see at the top, this is a substantial project to Cisco Boston. We're looking at a $110 million investment with $70 million in construction costs for the building, $20 million for machinery and equipment, and another $20 million related cost, which includes a demolition and cleanup of the site. Just another picture, again, I'm sure most of you saw these in the lobby. Cisco Boston currently has 830 associates, which we plan to retain and move with us to Lakeville. We also plan to create 75 new full-time jobs as a result of our expansion. You can see the list on the screen, and I'll read down the list of what the jobs are. We have an average salary range of about $50,000 on these jobs with an extensive benefit package. The company has very low turnover. We pride ourselves on long-term employment. I've been with the company for 29 years, and long-term employment is very common to us. I happen to have a special circumstance. I'm of three generations Cisco family. My dad retired from Cisco Boston, and my son works with our facility in Connecticut. Along with the jobs, along with the jobs we bring, we also bring, we bring a good local impact. Our residents, our associates, excuse me, in our current community spend about $1.5 million a year. And that's things like gasoline, the car wash, going to the pharmacy, whatever it may be, things you do on your way to and from work. It's about $1.5 million a year. Cisco Boston also stands to bring, will bring certificate permit fees in the first year. Our building criminal loan will be in excess of $1 million. And our vehicle excise taxes, we have committed to Lakeville to register all our vehicles in town. We currently generate about $130,000 a year in excise tax. I'm going to turn it back to Fred.
Chuck had mentioned that we have 830 employees. Not all 830 employees that are at this facility. We have roughly about 275 sales team. They're all over our New England. We have drivers up in Mamsur, so what would you say, Chuck, we have here in the facility in heavy bases?
300.
300, okay. Also, the company has a solid track record, the community involvement, local food pantries. We donate tremendous amount of food to local food banks, fire police, college scholarships, summer internship programs. We donate laptops to computers in the schools. Cisco plans to be very active with the town of Lakeville. You know, you may ask, why is so essential that the TIP, why is the TIP so important? Because as you recognize, today's day and age, the world has changed, and what we knew five years ago, or even a year ago, has totally changed, and we need to adapt to our surroundings and continue to compete in the marketplace and to make sure that we have a viable program. And lastly, I need to sum this to my corporation, that this is a viable program.
This TIP discussion with our TIP team, which Rita Garbutt and myself, working with Town Council, Rich Bowen, who has quite a bit of experience in TIPS. We've been working on this since March of 2010 with Cisco. It's very important to realize that this is a program that works together with the state. It's an economic development tool for state municipalities to work together to encourage business, attract business, and retain business. The program requires new private investment and job creation, which this will do, and the state administers the program and partners with the ETA communities, that's Economic Target Area communities. And this is what it looks like. Actually, I can't see up there too good. I have to look at my own copy. If you look, the minimum requirement for years was 13 years, so this is over a 13-year period. If you look at the current annual... If you look at the current annual taxes paid to Lakeville for the Lakeville Hospital property, that's $52,427. And that's what we would get for the next 13 years if the hospital was to remain vacant. And that's an estimate. Taxes change, tax rates change, so that's an estimate. So that would be $733,978 over 13 years. The new estimated tax revenue with the TIP over the 13-year period would be $2,629,095, including the excise tax from, in the TIP agreement, we did sign that Cisco will register all their trucks. And their trucks and their trailers are each registered separately. So we would be getting between the permits, which would be $1 million, as was already referred to, and the excise tax, it would be $2,690,000. So over that 13-year period, we could be looking at $733,978, or we could be looking at $6,530,73. And there is something about the Lakeville Hospital property. It doesn't come without its problems. All the buildings have to come down. An estimate for that was in 2002, I think the estimate to take down all the buildings was about $2.4 million. Now, these years later, the estimate, because there's also been contaminated soils that have been found on the property, so the estimate to clean up that property these years later has gone up as high as $6 million, and that's not knowing what contamination has been done to the soil to what extent. So also projected out is the five years after the TIP is over. And if you look at the top, all we're voting on tonight are the percentages, the 80, 80, 70, 65, 60, 60, 40, 30, 10, 10, 5, 5. Notice those last four or five years, it really goes down significantly. So the estimated projected annual average revenue to Lakeville is another thing I want you to look at. Annually, what we would get in taxes over that 13-year period, the annual average is The savings that Cisco Boston would get over those same years, average tax relief is $257,662. Our town council will speak after the presentation, and he will tell you that we negotiated a very good deal with Cisco. If you look at the bottom line in blue is what we would get if it remained empty like it is, which I find it very unlikely that somebody else is going to come along and be going to spend $6 million to clean up that property. And another thing that's been brought up by our assessor's office, Janet Black will speak tonight also, is that if something were to happen in National Development that still owns the property, were to back out of that property and not pay their taxes, and the town of Lakeville was to have to take responsibility for that property, we would be responsible for that cleanup. Next. These are a few tips, just so that you can see from other towns. I've heard a lot of things about we didn't really get a very good deal. I think we got a really good deal. Next. Just to show a few. Okay, let's do the last one. The benefits to Lakeville, new tax revenue, jobs, excuse me, much-needed new tax revenue, jobs, community support. During our recent emergency and flooding, Cisco Corporation has already stepped up to the plate because they donated most of the materials in food, paper goods, water, to the shelter that we had to open for the people that lost their homes during the flood. So they've already stepped up to the plate to help Lakeville, to show that they would be a good partner. This would be a good impact on local business. All the local businesses around there, the employees from Cisco, when they get out of work, would stop and they would use our local business, and they would clean up a contaminated property. In closing, the Board of Select would feel that approving this TIP is the right thing to do at this time to Lakeville. This is only the first step. The planning board will hold hearings, and you are all invited, which we'll have to find a different menu if everybody comes, to attend, and you'll have input into the decisions as they are being made. The townspeople will have the final say when we have another special town meeting because we would have to change the zoning at the Lakeville Hospital property. All we are asking tonight is to give Cisco a chance to work with us to determine if they are, in fact, the right fit for the Lakeville Hospital property, because another opportunity like this might not happen again soon. Thank you.
We have everyone back on stage, and the lights put on, please. Before I do anything, we have an annual town meeting that was supposed to happen in the middle of this presentation, and so as not to disturb it, I didn't interrupt. But before we do anything else, we have to postpone the annual town meeting until we terminate and dissolve the special town meeting.
So moved.
Motion to move, so moved and seconded. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see none opposed. Dan, what's going on in the cafeteria? I'm sorry, say again. Thank you. Point of order?
Yes. The warrant says, the warrant lists both properties.
Excuse me. We're voting right now just to postpone the annual town meeting until this is over. That's all we're doing now. I'm not talking about this article right now. I have to postpone the annual town meeting because it was supposed to happen.
I have a point of order about the warrant. Well, we can go later.
Is it about the special?
Yeah.
I'm not, I got to postpone this one. You stay right on your microphone, okay? But I've got to postpone the annual until we finish the special. Get it? Okay. The other room said fine. You guys said fine, so we're postponing the annual until the special is over. What is your point of order about the article?
The warrant lists both properties, and I simply find only about the main property.
I believe the one that was read, the motion that was read, only specifies the Lakeville Hospital property.
Yeah, when it was read, they only read the one property, but the warrant was passed out at both properties. I just want to make sure that we're voting on one property, not another property.
As I understand, when the warrant was put together, the decision hadn't been made. The important thing is, when we come to the meeting, usually this happens with a number of articles, it is fine-tuned, and it's fine-tuned by what is read. And what is read is that there's only one place under consideration, and that is the Lakeville Hospital property.
That was my point of order.
Okay. Before I continue, I just want to stress something. This article is about whether or not you give Cisco a TIP or not. It is not about how they're going to mitigate noise. That will be at a hearing later on when we have zoning. It is not about where they're going to put it on the property. We haven't got that far yet. What we are debating now in this article, too, is whether or not we give Cisco a TIP or not, okay? So when you come to the microphone, please be in favor of the TIP or against the TIP for specific reasons, but don't go asking them how they're going to put up noise obstruction devices, because it's not part of what we're discussing, okay? Okay. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? With a microphone that fits.
Okay. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. We now turn it over to the people of the town. If you wish to come to the microphone, that's fine. If you do not, we will move to a vote. Okay? Well, if you want to say something, you must move to the microphone, like we always have. I thought it was going to be too easy.
Dick Scott, Rush Pond Road. I have a couple of questions. The first question is, we're projecting 52,000 property tax. If I look at the annual, Lakeville Annual Report, the 2009 assessed value was $8 million for that property. This year, it's estimated at $5 million, and I'm wondering if somebody could explain to me the difference between the land value currently and the land value last year? Because according to my estimate, it's decreased $1,778,700, and that is one of the line items in the TIP proposal, that the estimated taxes is 52, but I don't understand why it's gone down to 52, so I hope somebody can explain it.
We're going to have to ask an assessor to do that. I'm going to give you, ask for an assessor to come forward, but I do believe that we're going to a tax court over the large amount, and that's why it was eventually lowered. But would an assessor step forward? Do we have an assessor in Lakeville here tonight?
The properties might only end with the board assessors. The property value has decreased over the past year, and as a result of that, the amount of taxes has been reduced as well.
He wants to know why it went down, that's what his question was.
Property values as a whole have gone down. And what we do is, we do this with our properties.
Excuse me. We asked him a question. We at least have to let him give the answer, whether he believes it or not.
I have a follow-up question, but I'll be at the back of the line.
Thank you. Mr. Malini, do you have anything further to say?
Not really, just we've determined based on comparable properties throughout southern Massachusetts, the value of this property has gone down during the course of that fiscal year.
Whether you like it or not, that's your answer, okay? Yes, the person on this side is next.
Hi, Dan Cooney, 59 Main Street. I just want to state that I'm against the TIP. The site, while Cisco seems to be a fine company, the site is not zoned for industry. It's a commercial residential area. I think it's a bad fit for the town. That's the gateway to the town. It's referred to as a gateway. It's a gateway to Main Street. I don't think it's a good fit. I think as good as it may be, I think it's ill-considered and it's short-sighted.
Okay? Thank you. But I'm going to get to a clapping match, okay? Because that's not going to make sense. The only thing that's really going to count are these things. So let's listen to people and hear what they have to say, okay? Sir.
Thank you. My name is Frank Stair. I live on Crest Drive. I'm semi vehemently opposed to this for a variety of reasons, because when you step back and look at this, this looks to me like an invitation issued by the town fathers to Cisco, and it's a gold-plated invitation served up on a silver platter covered with chocolate and yeah. It's got Cisco drawn all the way to the back. Crest Drive is caught, unfortunately, in what we call a moving area, and I noticed on their slides that Cisco neglected to show you any of the trucks or the loading docks, okay? And this may be a refrigerated distribution facility by name, but it's really going to end up as a trucking depot. That's the part of the depot, the depot, okay? And they move each of these trucks many times a day. They move over to the fuel depot, they move away from the fuel depot, they move into the loading dock, okay? These are at low speeds, accelerating speeds, and they take it to a little piece in the driveway out to 705, to 105, up to the exit ramps, which are tight curve elevated ramps, okay? And then they accelerate it a third of a mile down Route 495 to get where they're going. On the return trip, they do it again. Now, so if you move every truck at least four times, at least two are about three-quarters of all on all trips, okay? And you're going to bring in 800 people, okay, that, and probably most of those people are going to retain their jobs. In this economy, I don't think that more than people are going to quit. You're going to hire 800 new people, okay? So you have good neighbors. You want to give one a good neighbor. What's a good neighbor? A good neighbor is quiet. A good neighbor doesn't make noise at 3:00 in the morning. 3:00 in the morning, a Crest Drive beer fridge, not much, 3:30 birds, occasionally you've got deer in the backyard. I've seen three flocks of turkeys. This is going away, okay? And to let the largest gas station Lakeville's ever seen sit on top of the Aquifer that 200 residents draw their well water from, to me, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I'm sorry, but I'm opposed to it.
I gave this gentleman a lot of latitude, okay? Because we're not debating noise, we're not debating trucking, we're not debating, we're debating whether Cisco gets a TIP or not, okay? And I understand from the domino effect that if you vote to have Cisco have the TIP, they now can create a hearing to discuss your issues. And I gave you the latitude so that it would be said once. They are going to be, in your estimation, those things. I don't want to have to talk about that anymore. I want to know why this TIP is a bad thing, okay? Excuse me. I want to finish my point, okay? I want to know why this negotiation is a bad thing. Later on, we may have a hearing, in which case it is going to be found out that they're going to be too noisy to be there. I don't know, but I do know that we can't open this out completely so that we end up with both the hearing that's down the road and the TIP argument at the same time. So I gave you a latitude, and you said what you had to say, but I don't want five more people saying, okay? Yes?
Can we just respond to the chocolate-covered silver platter part, please?
Uh, no, I'd rather not. You'll get your dibs in later on. Okay? But because that's charged, and all we're going to end up is a lot of charged air, and it's unfortunate that it was phrased that way. You're, no, I'm going to go back and forth, so you're next.
You answered my question, Mr. Down, 430 Main Street. I live in front and center of this project, and I am all for it's a win-win.
Yes, sir.
Dick Scott, Rush Pond Road. I'm opposed to the TIP. The estimated tax value is $35 million. Cisco has stated that they're going to invest up to $110 million. It seems to me that even on a depreciated tax exemption scale, we should be at least assessing what the proper value is. Why it should be $110 dropping to $35 makes absolutely no sense to me. It seems to me that the land itself, if compared to other industrial parks in the area, for example Middleborough, we would find that the per-acre value of that property is significantly higher than $35 million after the improvements, purchase, and cleanup of that site.
Okay, I'll let that lie, too, but I am not going to get into an argument over whether the assessors were right or wrong.
No, but it's a TIP question. They put --
I understand what your point is. I understand what your point is, and you've made it, but I don't want more people getting up and asking the assessors why they did it. It's a fait accompli.
It's a TIP negotiation question, sir, with all due respect.
Can I have the answer?
Take one more from the floor, and then I'll do it up here, because I've kind of asked the public to do some of this. You're going to have your shots.
My name is Valerie Lynn. I'm resident at Porseri Drive, and I'm also the president of the Cranberry Committee Chamber of Commerce. We submitted a letter in support of the TIP as we bring 75 new jobs to qualified Lakeville residents, as well as enhance the businesses in Lakeville. The curves, the Allores, the Aquinas, the banks, all of them have benefited not only the Lakeville businesses, but the businesses in Middleborough surrounding towns that the Lakeville residents rely on, like M&amp;O Pizza, like Holly Berries, and so we're in support of the TIP.
Thank you. All right, the stage. Who wants to talk?
Hi, I'm Robyn Smalley.
Stephen.
I'm going to address the question about the valuation of property of $35 million. Even though at the presentation showed that we spent $110 million, you're also, that part of that spend is going to be you're also, that part of that spend is going to be twenty thousand to get the land in preparation so that they can start the construction. Another twenty, twenty million, another twenty million is related to personal property that they're going to use to fill the building up, the racks, the front lifts, or the equipment that they need to do one of their business. So you've got to subtract that from the hundred and ten million. There's also some soft costs that are involved, architectural fees, you name it. Thirty-five million dollars is probably a conservative estimate. It's not cut and stone. It's going to be valued based on what the assessor, that problem lady that just alluded to, whatever the assessed value comes out. So if it's higher, then it's a benefit to the town of Lakeville. This is, this, this presentation is just for, presentation purposes only, it's an estimate.
Nancy.
Um, I think it was thirty-five added to the five million that it's already appraised at. So I really think it's forty. But what I wanted to ask at this point is because everyone who got a truck.
Oh, you are.
Because of people wondering if we got a good deal, I would just like our town council to just say a few words about what he thinks about what kind of a deal we did get. He has negotiated between twenty-five and thirty, twenty to thirty TIPS for Coleman and Page. And he worked with us every step of the way. And I would like you to hear his opinion of how we did.
This is Rich Bowen, our town council.
Mr. Moderator, and Chairman, members of the audience, thank you for the privilege of the floor. My name is Rich Bowen, I'm a senior partner in Coleman and Page. I'm chairman of Coleman and Page's tax department. I've worked on TIP and pilot agreements ranging in size from nuclear power plant to small mom and pop startup. So I've done quite a few of these over the years. There are four things about this negotiation that I think are fairly unique. The first of all, first of all is the duration of the tax relief. The statute allows you to go up to twenty years. And typically, a business will negotiate for tax relief for the longest period possible. In other words, the full twenty years. In this case, if this plan were approved, it would be for a period of thirteen years, not twenty years. So I would say that the negotiation team did a very good job in limiting it to that duration. The second point has to do with the percentage of tax exemption. It's fairly common over a twenty-year period for the exemption to run from one hundred percent in the first few years down to five or ten percent in the final years. In this particular case, you have a percentage that starts at eighty percent, not one hundred percent, and then declines fairly rapidly. In fact, the drop is quite precipitous. It's not unusual to see tax exemptions greater than fifty percent to go out for ten or even fifteen years. So the third advantage that you have in this negotiation is the relatively quick drop in tax exemption under the agreement that was negotiated. And the fourth and final point is this. The team was able to negotiate a provision that is very advantageous for the town from a revenue point of view, and revenue neutral from the point of view of Cisco. And that provision is that the vehicles be actually registered in Lakeville. That means approximately an extra one hundred and thirty thousand dollars in excise tax that comes to the community. Now, Cisco could put those vehicles wherever they wanted, but by negotiating out that term, in essence, your negotiating team has picked up a bonus of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So just to sum up, this particular deal is unique for a few, for a few reasons. One is its relatively short duration of exemption, its low starting percentage, its quick drop, and finally, the provision that nets you an extra one hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the registration of vehicles in Lakeville. Thank you.
From the floor, this side, please.
I'm Cameron O'Connor from Nelson's World Road. I live less than a mile or a mile or so from the facility. I'm also employed at Cisco Corporation for thirteen years. And I just like to say that I do support this, they're a good company. And I know we're just voting on the TIP tonight. I know the town does need the services and the funds from the tax from all this increased revenue. And I know that over the course of the next twenty years, that it's going to be something a little bit for the town to do, so.
Sharon.
Sharon, I just have one question, I'm not sure it's relevant.
Well, I'll tell you. You know I'm good at that.
Regarding the paperwork that's got to be submitted to the state.
What is your question?
What happens if that paperwork isn't approved?
Okay. Alita, you got the [inaudible]? No, okay. Selectmen?
Mr. Moderator, through to the previous speaker. If the state disapproves, the deal is dead.
Okay, so it's important, I got the paperwork straight. No one on that side? Yes, sir.
[inaudible] 19 Kingman Street.
Yes, sir.
I'm in favor of this TIP because we are not doing anything right now as far as any taxes, I mean, a little bit, but not much at all.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I am friends of [inaudible]. They love it, they're going to have good jobs and.
I'm looking for some reasons why either this TIP is a bad idea or a good idea. If you're going to vote for it or against it, that's a wonderful thing. But you don't have to tell me that, okay? And I'm not saying anything against the man because the gentleman said he knows people who are Cisco people and it's a good company, so that's okay. But let's not get in line saying I'm for it, I'm against it. Person on my left.
Mr. Moderator, I was just.
Mr. Moderator, would you state your name?
I'm [inaudible]. I was wondering if the selectman or if the town council may be able to explain maybe Section C and D, particularly that section that talks about the certified extension of project application. And D, the section that refers to, under the economic incentive program for approval and designation of the Main Street property.
So he wants an explanation of C and D, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We'll give him a second to take a look at what he has to talk about. Are you set, town council?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, through to the previous speaker. These are, lawyers call them ministerial functions. What I mean by ministerial function is, C and D give the board of selectmen the authority to actually move the application forward. C gives the selectmen the authority to sign the agreement. Of course, only if you give them the authority to sign the agreement. There are certain regulatory forms that go with the submission. It gives the selectmen the authority to sign those documents. And D, that gives the board of selectmen the authority to submit all the paperwork that would go with the application. So basically, C and D are legalese for, if you approve this tax agreement, you're giving the selectmen the authority to go ahead and file all the paperwork and sign all the proper documents.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Moderator?
In part, Mr. Moderator. I guess what I'm looking at, as I read D, it appears as though we're actually putting the designation of common property, not giving it to Cisco for that particular project.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, with your permission to the previous speaker, you're absolutely correct. As part of the process, you have to designate the particular site where the TIP would be located, and D does that.
And that would be the site that was outlined on the map that we saw? Is that correct, select people? Does that answer your question?
Not the way I wanted it to, but yes.
That always doesn't happen, but. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Marks in Eltbrook Road. I have a question I'd like referred to the town council, please. What mechanism is there to ensure that once the disagreement were to be approved, that Cisco doesn't change its mind about registering vehicles in Lakeville?
Okay. Throw me to you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through to the previous speaker. Two things would happen. One, if Cisco didn't register the vehicles as required, they'd be in breach of contract, and we have the remedies that go with that, which I think you're probably familiar with. But secondly, if Cisco did not follow through on the terms of the TIP agreement, what we would do is we would apply to the state to decertify the project and to revoke the benefits that are being given to them.
Any follow-up?
So that would mean that if they did not register the vehicles in Lakeville, they would be in breach of the agreement, and all the [inaudible] would be subject to full action.
Mr. Moderator, through to the previous speaker. Yes, what would happen is we would notify the state of this breach and ask that the project be decertified and that the agreement be rescinded.
Thank you.
Since they haven't talked, and you've talked several times, I'm going to defer to that. Okay.
[inaudible] Main Street. From everything I've heard about Cisco, it has been a company that has been well-liked in Norton. They are conscientious, they aren't, it's a good business, they run things well. It's well-established, it's been there for a long time. And the property that we are looking at in Lakeville, how long has it been vacant? And the situation has been, nothing's been done. And all that happens is the condition of that property can deteriorate. This is a great opportunity for the town, I hope we do not miss it.
Thank you. I'm going to let these two, then I'll go to you, no matter how many stand-up actors. Go ahead, state your name, please.
Mr. Moderator, Chuck Evers, 40th and South Kingman Street. We've had numerous proposals for development on this property. At some point, we really need to decide if we might finally have the best option. Dents housing was proposed. Zoning conforming housing is not cost-feasable with six-plus million dollars required to clean up the site. And the burden to our schools and public services if it was residential, you can agree. This is far less traffic congestion than a supermarket and a department store, which is already permitted. Doesn't have a barroom serving alcohol like a Chili's would, that is already permitted, that may require public services. Lakeville needs a cash cow to drink from. This project is very well devised, I feel.
It's a great way to afford to end on, but look, he's not down.
Rochester has CMAs, Goodman had a power plant. If Lakeville doesn't get a Cisco, some other town will. We're very fortunate that we have to get, that we get to visit this again. Most towns don't have two chances at the approval process. We have this one, then we have the zoning process. Let's support this TIP tonight and move to the next step in another meeting.
Valerie Kenny, that's a tough act of all of us. Yeah, well, milk it.
I just would like to say that the town elected officials and town council have clearly put a lot of effort into getting the first step of this project underway. And I think we owe it to the town to go ahead and investigate to the next step. We all know what revenues we need. We all know what budgets are, and we all know what our family budgets are. So if we have an opportunity to increase revenues to the town, I think we owe it to ourselves to continue to the next level.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Last question. There's been talk about the fact that at the end of this agreement, we would get all the revenue that Cisco would be legally required to pay us. I'm asking the question with regard to excise tax and valuation of the property. At the end of the TIP agreement, will they be taxed on the depreciated value of the vehicles or on replacement value of the vehicles? Because it seems to me that fundamental is that it would be the replacement value, not the depreciated value.
So my question is, what, at the end of the agreement, would be the tax revenue base? What's it based on? Replacement value of the improved property and vehicles or depreciated value? Have you got the whole question, town council? It's like an A and a B.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through to the previous speaker. The excise taxation of vehicles is determined by a schedule set out by the state. It's done on a book value established by the registered motor vehicles, and it works on a percentage basis. So the tax, the excise taxable value of Cisco vehicles at the end of this agreement will depend on the age of the vehicles and the number of vehicles. And that's going to depend on, I suppose, what sort of business operation you're running at the time. Assuming that it's similar in scale, you know, it ought to be about the same. Every vehicle has a certain life. You rotate it out. The concept of depreciation doesn't come in because it is all set by book value, which is set by the registry.
Is it applied to this answer? Yes, go.
It's my understanding that Cisco replaces their trucks on a five-year cycle. In fact, they're so far ahead of the game that they're using California emissions now because they're the most strict in the country, and they want to be ahead of the game. I personally, since I've been trucking since last year, every time a Cisco truck goes by, I look at it. And I was in Key West, Florida, and a shiny Cisco truck was right by, and somebody that was with me noticed that I had a Volvo engine, or a Volvo front, whatever you call it, a front garage. I was impressed.
Probably both plates, the front too. Yes, sir.
I agree with the [inaudible] trying to get more in the building because it's more for the job hours, and they are a good company. Have [inaudible] care about the community and stuff. I think that'd be really good.
Thank you. Mrs. Black.
I'm Janet Black, and I'm on the board of assessors. I've been valuing property for better than thirty years. I can only tell you that if this place stays vacant for an indefinite period of time, the longer it stays vacant, the bigger the ghosts get, the less chance there is of finding a qualified buyer, much less a respectable one, as we're exchanging right now. There are, there is contamination over there. It's a big problem, and I don't know why any of the waters are considering that. You know, as a mother, I wouldn't want that near my children for one more minute if it was absolutely necessary. As far as your property value is declining, if there are more people employed at that location, there's going to be more demand for properties. More demand increases values just implicitly. So I'm not quite clear as to why you would oppose such a reputable company coming in and saving our children from cleaning up this contamination that the state has left us. The state is the one that's going to be requiring us as townspeople to clean that property up because they're going to assume that we, as a town, have much deeper claw pockets than a corporation which has failed to develop any plan as far as I'm concerned because none of it has been forthcoming. Particularly the people running that project of the commercial use, I think have been, you know, misleading us for a long time. And this company right now wants to get moving on this right now. We need the revenue. We do not need a huge bill for cleanup because the price tag is going up on that every day, I'm sure of that. Particularly if the town's going to be responsible to clean it up.
Thank you. We have two people. I am assuming that you have new questions. I'll entertain them. We've been talking about this for an hour, so I'm just going to be kind of strict and ask people, if you have something that you have to say that's new, that's good. If you just want to say I'm for it, why don't we wait for the vote for that? Yes, sir, you're next.
If we, Mrs. Rockley, if we vote for this Article II as written, does that mean everything in here is viable?
You mean, you mean everything that is in it has to be done?
Right.
This is the one that's red, not the one that originally was out. It's nothing to do with the tent, the golf course. This is the, the property on, that the hospital is on.
But in here, it says either or.
No, that's gone. That was when the warrant was originally printed. But since that time, the motion that came before us tonight is just on the hospital property. It is not on the golf course.
No, is that a fact?
That's a fact. No. Now, what was spoken as the original article, because the man who came forth first thing had a point of order and asked the same question. It's not what the warrant article originally as posted, because at that time, they were considering two different places. Since then, they have decided only on one place, the Lakeville Hospital place. And the Lakeville Hospital place is the only place that was read into what is going to be done. Well, you don't have, you don't change the whole warrant and then start another meeting. What you do is you change the writing of the, of the reading of, of the statement, and that's what was done tonight. So there is no golf course involved. Honest. Okay? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, I've heard twice now that the town would be responsible for the environmental cleanup of the site. That is not true at all. We have a current owner of the property that is very economically responsible, and there is a current DEP permit in place to clean up the property. Even if they default, for whatever reason, it would be very negligent of the town to move forward and take the property by tax because of cleanup. We have no obligation to clean that property whatsoever. The second thing I'd like to mention, also relative to the public hearing that we had prior to, there was mentioned that we have no control over the current owner, whereas we would have a lot of control over Cisco, which is also completely false. We have total control by our zoning bylaws over the mixed-use development. That's the way it was established. We have no control unless Cisco can stand up right now and tell us that they're willing to work with us to the same extent that National did over what will be an industrial zone property. And I know that that's not particular to approval or disapproval of the TIP, but I think it's important for everybody to know.
Okay, Steve.
To clean up, yeah. You're absolutely right. We don't have to take the property. Before they were default, they had taxes, but they don't have to pay the taxes either. So you wouldn't get the $52,000 and all that contaminating stuff, and just sit there and continue reaching for the water supply. That would be one of the options that we could take with the public. We would take that, because why would we want to take that over and have to clean it up ourselves? Because that's not, doesn't seem to be a viable proposal. The current owner, and I'm not going to speak to Janet Black, but I think what she was getting at is that we can't control, the current owner, the guy, forward and do what they promised to do, that they're just going to sit on the property because of the economic conditions.
All right, that's, that answers one part of the question. He was looking for a commitment from Cisco. I'm not sure that commitment can happen tonight. I think that commitment has to be at the hearing over the zoning. And if they say no at the zoning hearing, then you don't get your commitment. Right now, we're talking about this TIP, and I want to stick to that. So ask that question again at the zoning meeting, if this goes through tonight. What? Well, you would like to, but I'm postponing it later. Cisco would like to comment.
We want to partner with the town. We said this the last meeting, and I'll say it again and over and over again. We will, we want to be partnership, we want to be good neighbors, and we want to hear what, as we proceed forward, what we need to do to make sure that we do the right thing. So Cisco is in.
Remember, something new, something new. Mr. Marson.
A question, a comment. First of all, by saying that this requires a two-thirds vote.
No, it does not.
It's not.
It's a majority vote.
However, the zoning meeting should be required, to change the zoning, would require a two-thirds vote.
Yes, it would.
Before this body.
Yes, it, well, hopefully if everyone shows up again.
I've lived in this town for 40 years, and this is only the second time I've seen the numbers of people come out like this. And the last time had to do with something that was related, it had to do with taxes, it had to do with an override. Both of my kids have graduated from high school, one graduated from college. It's no skin off my nose what happens to the schools in town, except as I feel like to think I'm a decent citizen and I'm concerned about the education that our kids will receive. I see cuts in the school budget. I see cuts in the services that are being provided for kids. I know my kids had the benefit of extracurricular programs, music, and, and fine teachers. If, if this program is approved, it, it could lead the way towards the restoration of some of these services in our schools if we desperately need. So that means that I think we should support at least this step, knowing that it's your first step to the path.
Thank you. Yes, sir, state your name, please.
Yes, Randall Kenny, resident of Green Street, taxpayer president.
That's the only, the only people that can talk, that's him.
Now, it's nice to hear Cisco just say they're a partner and they're going to be in it. Well, I'm just wondering, if they're a partner, they're only a certain partner with the amount of taxes they pay. And no, no other business in this town that gets a tax break like that. Now, Cisco even says they are the largest distributor in the country. I guess they make a buck. So I'm wondering, how much money are they not paying? We hear what they're going to pay in taxes for this thing. How much money are they not paying that other companies and residents have to pay because they pay 100% and not get the little bit? We hear 75 new jobs. Who's to say? That's from Lakeville residents. Those are 75 new jobs. And a lot of people say, oh, new jobs to Lakeville residents. It's not. So here you tell me the amount of cash value that they are not going to pay, and that maybe that money could be used if they paid the full price of what they should, as you can see, a bunch of 40s.
Yes. Well, the part that you can, yes.
Part of the agreement with Cisco is that 75 new jobs would qualify Lakeville residents with that first choice. Or behind ours, who have, you know, an advantage.
All right, look, I'm not going to get into a two-way discussion here. You asked your question, she tried to give you a response. Okay, decide. There was another part? I'm sorry, I didn't see your hands, Steve.
What, the company's knock-out day equates to 3.3 million. Forty-three percent of the property tax they're going to get is equal to $2 million. And then the personal property tax is 1.3, that's fully excluded for the whole 13 years. But if you, to look at it another way.
No, you answered the question I asked, what they're going to.
No, I still have, I saw a floor I saw.
Yeah, and I'd really appreciate if you wouldn't interrupt, because no one did it to you.
But if you were to look at it from a total project cost, and more than for the town of Lakeville, because we are getting 100% of the estimated vehicle tax, we are getting 100% of the permit fees, which equate to $1 million. So if you add that in to the amount that we're going to get over the 13-year period, and divide that into the total cost of all this, it becomes 39% rate for them, not 43%. Forty-three percent is just for the real estate property. You have to keep in mind, we're getting 100% vehicle tax, and we're getting 100% the permit fees.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just have a question. I'd like to thank the management team at Cisco for coming in tonight. I appreciate it. I had a question on the schedule of the fees. Couple of years ago, you had some significant fees, some of the permitting fees, things like that. Is there a plan to put that tip, that money into some kind of an account so we can smooth out that revenue over the life of the tax declaration? You know what I'm saying, Steve? Is there a way that you're going to put that money away so we don't, you know, put it in that budget, we're going to put it in a reserve account?
Are you going to identify the money, Steve?
Yeah. Well, we all know the financial position of the town. We get another 5% cut from the state coming off the back of the 20% cut last year. It was very difficult to budget, to balance the budget this year, which we're going to go ahead and on. Is there a plan? Yeah, there's a plan to put money back into stabilization to maintain that practice that we adopted a long time ago, but we haven't been able to do because of the last four years of cuts from the state. There'll be plans to put that money away and to spend that money wisely within the town so that the town of Lakeville remains sustainable for the future.
Did that answer your question? I think the answer was no.
I didn't, I didn't deal with it. I was looking for.
You're looking for a kind of a special fund.
My fear is that the town would spend the money, and I think it was 2013, 2014, which was significant, and then have challenges the next winter to get it to drop right now. We're going to put it in some reserve.
We're going to put it in stabilization.
All right, hold on. Town council?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through to the previous speaker. Essentially, what you would be telling them would be sort of a, almost like a sinking fund, that arrangement.
Balance out that revenue.
Right. And if you look in Chapter 40 and Chapter 44, which would be municipal finance statutes.
Think on this back pocket, go ahead.
Good, good. I'll get mine right here. In fact, just to get the full dramatic effect, there we go. You know, basically, you can't set up any special funds unless it's authorized by statute. And there, and there is no specific statutory authorization that will let you set up a sinking fund of the type that you described. You could petition at a future town meeting for a special act along those lines. But another way of handling it is, as the selectmen suggested, which is to put the money into the stabilization fund. As the tax money comes in, it goes into the general fund, and it can't be spent without the approval of town meeting. So certainly, it would be within your power and the power of every voter to direct the, whatever amount you thought was appropriate, go into stabilization. Because the stabilization is actually, can be used as a sort of a sinking fund. Its original purpose was to stabilize tax rates. It's kind of morphed into a rainy day fund, but it could be used in the way that you're suggesting.
My last thought on this is just that I kind of look forward to this, getting a lot of lapped up from Cisco.
Cisco's on a hook. Okay.
Martin Rose, Longwood Drive. I move that we call the question. Motion has been made to call the question.
Come here a second. Motion has been made and seconded. Calling the question, ladies and gentlemen, means we cut off discussion and we go to a vote. But before we do that, we have to vote on terminating debate, which is what we're about to do. Now, this takes a two-thirds vote. So if you want to talk some more... Yes, it does. Do not doubt me. It takes a two-thirds vote to cut off debate. And so if you vote in favor of this, you're in favor of cutting off debate, and if you vote against it, you're voting against cutting off debate. I'm going to ask the cafeteria people to keep an eye on what's going on over there, because I'm going to ask them, but we're going to try it with a site vote first. In this room, all in favor of cutting off debate, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. In the cafeteria, what is going on, Dan? Go, Dan. What does that mean? Is ever, is there a large number of votes in favor in the cafeteria? Thank you. All opposed to cutting off debate, raise your cards. I see none. Dan, oh, I see one. Dan, how many do you see? Thank you. I think we're there. I declare debate cut, cut off, and we now move to the vote itself, which is a majority vote, and there is no longer any discussion on it. All in favor of, oh, wait a minute. Counters, we're going to count this one. Even though it's a majority vote, I want to count it. Okay? So you raise your cards and keep them raised until such time as we have the numbers coming down to me. Ready? All in favor of Article II, raise your cards.
Fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two. Dan, when you have your number, yell.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. Cafeteria? You can still be counted. One hundred and twenty-eight in favor in the cafeteria. Thank you, you may put your cards down. All opposed to Article II, please raise your cards. Counters, please count.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Thirty-eight. Cafeteria? I'm sorry, again? Forty-five? The vote is 396 in favor, 140 against. I declare Article II as passed. Now, we'll move to a motion to dissolve the special town meeting, and we'll take a five-minute break. First, dissolve the meeting, please. So moved, seconded. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, raise your cards. Thank you, the special. down. All opposed, raise your cards. Thank you. The special town meeting is dissolved. Five minutes, we begin the other one. I think we ought, I think we ought to try it, Dan. We have lots of room now. Please try and move them in here. This is just like Christmas. They're coming. All right, while they're filing in, I, I have to go through some of the same procedure for the annual as I did for the special. So if they can file in quietly and the rest of you can kind of, be quiet, we will do some of the preliminaries and not be here any longer than they have to be. For being present, the annual town meeting will now come to order. The warrant for this annual town meeting was signed by Board of Selectmen on May 24th... Shh. ...2010, and it was published in the May 27, 2010 edition of the Middle Borough Gazette, and it was posted by Constable Matthew Perkins on May 25, 2010. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter Two, Section Three of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Messages of General Laws have been satisfied. The, for this annual town meeting, the appointed counters are going to be the same. Marilyn Hunt on my far left, Bruce LaFaye in the back middle, Joe Chamberlain in the middle and front and stage, and Bob Canessa in the right, and now Dan doesn't have to count the cafeteria anymore. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Messages of General Laws, the Town General Bylaws, and by precedent, prior town meeting. All the Town Bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures. Prior town meetings have relied upon town meeting time as the standard for conduct at late town meetings. It is my intention to continue the precedent. You will note that the two microphones have been positioned on either side of the two aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition, from the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name, and if you would like to address your address, please be free to do so. And if you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so the court will have it as part of the official records of the meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length someone can speak, but generally, that has not been an issue. However, if I find that I will exercise my prerogative to keep the meeting moving, if I find that the speaker repeats the same points that she has recreated. As it impacts past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion opportunity to speak to the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. There are no zoning articles. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. Now, we are at the annual meeting, so only the orange card works. Okay? During the voting, make sure you raise your card nice and high so it can be easily determined the quantum of the vote. I will ask you to lower your cards when that vote count is done. However, if there is a counted vote, keep your card held high so that the public can see it, and count the votes in your section. The use of the voting card will assure that only votes of registered eligible voters are counted. Please don't drink any coffee or anything else. Just water. We vote, okay? And we don't have to do... And now we can go directly to the three procedural motions. The first one is to waive the reading of the warrant. May I have a motion to that effect?
No.
Seconded. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. That has been unanimously passed. The second is for people who are not citizens of the town to speak. John McCarthy, Superintendent of the Schools, Chris Peck, Superintendent of the Streets, Olivia Mallow, who is in charge of the library, and Laurie Hunter, the principal of the elementary school.
Some more.
Thank you. Seconded. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. I declare unanimously passed. The third is that if two-thirds vote is required by statute, the moderator be authorized to declare two-thirds vote in the same manner as a majority vote is declared, providing, however, the lawful vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, the moderator shall verify by taking account.
Some more.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I don't see any cards up. I declare the amendment passed. We now can move through Article One. I move that the town vote to raise appropriate $155,237.00. Motion has been made and seconded. I am going to move through Article One, highlighting the, the section involved, which is kind of outlined in black. As I move through, if there is a hold, please indicate hold, and we will come back to you to discuss that. Okay? So I am going to go through it, and we'll see how it goes. Selectmen personnel, $10,000. I'm reading the last column on the right.
Vote.
I hear a hold. Thank you. Assessors personnel?
Vote.
Board of Health personnel?
Vote.
Treasury and Collector personnel?
No vote.
And Town Clerk personnel. So we have three holds on the Selectmen, the Assessors, and Board of Health. Before I open it up for general discussion, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this out.
Thank you. Does the maker of the motion, excuse me, does the maker of the motion have anything to say to the motion before I turn it over to the polls?
I do not have anything to say.
Thank you. Okay, and I will ask the people, and there were several, who put it on hold, to please speak to it. Chuck, you can be number one.
Mr. Moderator, Chuck Evers, 40, South Pigment Street. Does this article reinstate the statements for the Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, and the Board, the Assessors?
Someone care to respond?
All right, let's hold it. Let's hold it a second. What do you mean by reinstate? In fiscal '09, we cut the stipends in half. We carry that also in this, in our current fiscal year now. Does this put it back to the value of the stipend that was in fiscal '08, which was, I believe, is this amount?
Okay, that's your question.
That is correct. In '08, no, no, or '09, '10, have all the Madoff employees been recalled?
Finance Committee? Finance Committee, respond to that, please.
No. Thank you. Has all the positions cut through attrition been refilled?
To the best of your knowledge, now.
Does the employees' hours that had been cut with the budget been reinstated?
No.
No. And, Mr. Moderator, I move that we modify or amend Article One to cut the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, and the Assessors $5,000 each, and bring them back to this current fiscal year stipend.
Right.
Thank you. May I have it in writing, please? I think you've made your point in speaking to it. We have now what is called a amendment, and we have to vote on the amendment before we vote on the motion itself, even though technically it passes. We still have to do it anyway. Would you like to speak to it, Kelly?
I think not. I think maybe I'll just wait until this will... My question was why? Why it's doubled?
Why they restored the amount?
Yeah. Why? In these fiscal times, why?
Well, it's a question. Does the Finance Committee wish to respond? Restored would have a word for wish to use.
We just agreed to restore the amounts for over two years ago after they had foregone their capital savings for that period of time.
I guess my question was really for the Selectmen.
Okay, does the Selectmen just address it?
Give it a shot. Um, the Selectmen in 2009, to set a good example, cut their stipends in half because things were really bad. So we thought we would start before everything else started to be cut. I believe this year, when we did the original budget that we came up with, before the budget that we have for tonight, it included raises for the fire, police, and non-union. That has since changed. Originally, the budget included restoring a lot of things, and so the stipends were reinstated also. I mean, it's, it's $3,000 and $4,000 per person on the boards, who, all the boards, and I can't speak for myself, I'm uncomfortable speaking for myself, but I know the Board of Assessors, and the Board of Health, and my other two Selectmen, and myself, we, we work hard, and it's not a lot of money. Like, if you were talking about the salaries of the full-time elected officials, you're talking about $66,000. And I have to say, some of the people, I'm not saying we put in 40 hours, but a lot of people on a lot of the boards put in quite a few hours. There's a difference between what the full-time elected people get, like 58 and 66, and a lot of the people ran for these positions, and that was restored. It was the $3,000 and $4,000 stipend to pay for gas, to pay for your phone bill, to pay for supper when you don't have time to go home because you have meeting in the afternoon and a meeting at night. So that's why that was basically reinstated, and...
And then you.
I just want to ask, what are the salaries for the school committee members?
I think everyone knows it's nothing.
I'm sorry, the salaries of school members?
I don't think everybody does know.
I just wanted to ask you, two of you, the Selectmen, what salaries are for school committee members?
Thank you. Chuck.
Mr. Moderator, nobody is questioning how many hours people put in for work for the town. I think it's quite obvious the number of hours that everybody spends for the town, all elected officials, whether they receive a stipend or not. My argument, or my, my reason for this is, these three groups, these three elected, uh, groups of elected officials, they're the leaders of the town. The leaders need to set that example as the chairman has just stated. We did that two years ago. I think we need to continue on that, and that when the employees are made whole on all the cuts, on all the budget cuts, the hours that have been cut, and the budgets restored, then I think it's, that would be the appropriate time to restore the stipend to 100%.
We're voting on the amendment to cut each of those three held items from $10,000 to $5,000. It's a majority vote. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. The amendment passes by majority vote. We will now go to the entire Article One, that which was amended and that which is not. 5,000, 5,000, 5,000, 66, 486, 10,1, and 58, 751. Seeing now no one before any of the microphones, we will give it a vote. This is a majority vote, I think. It is. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article One, please raise your cards. I see only a few cards raised. I declare Article One is passed by majority vote. Article Two...
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move to take the Articles out of order and have Article Eight precede Article Two.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take the Articles out of order. Which is technically is called to advance an Article? Article Eight prior to Article Two. We are now going to have discussion on whether or not we're going to advance to Article Eight. We're not voting on Article Eight. Okay? Just talking about moving it. Would you care to speak to that, Maker of the Motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Goodfellow, 29 Baker Lane. Article Eight pertains to the out-of-district, out-of-district special education budgeting line. It has also been included in Article Two, and it actually is described as replacing Article Eight. I think that it's important in order, in order to have the appropriate discussion that's waiting to be needed in Article Eight, that it be taken up separately and before Article Two. Otherwise, I think that will be very difficult for us to backtrack.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this? This is just on taking it out of order, not whether you support it or not. Remember, you are supposed to vote on everything.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Well, then, never mind. Okay, fine.
Mr. Moderator, I would oppose this, because the purpose was to have an article heard so that the people after their article were heard could go home and not attend the rest of the meeting.
Well, that's true, but we have no guarantees.
I would require as to, as to whether or not that's the actual purpose of addressing the article. And if it is not, I would have no opposition.
Will the Maker of the Motion address that?
Certainly. Mr. Moderator, I believe that if you take a look at Articles Two, and you see this scope of it, it is, it is, I think, something that could become very complicated. And if you, if you also take a look at Article Two, it alludes to the fact that perhaps if Article Two were passed as written, it would therefore nullify Article Eight. If we could have the discussion on Article Eight before Article Two, I think that that would allow for everyone to fully understand exactly what is happening here. So the reason for my desire to advance the article is so that we can understand utter Article Eight before progressing to Article Two. And I believe that if we pass Article Two first, it makes it very, very difficult for us to go back and discuss Article Eight.
Could I clarify?
Sure, you can try.
No, I think what you're saying is Article Eight is an amount all by itself, but in Article Two, that amount is within the school budget. So you wish to discuss whether or not you want it within the school budget or passed without being in the school budget. Is that correct?
Yes, that is what I think is important.
Does that answer your question?
I would move that his motion be amended to have discussion on Article Eight, but not the vote on Article Eight. Discussion now...
You can't do that. You read, when you present something before the town, you have to act on the warrant article with a yes or a no. You can't discuss it and go away.
Or information. If we could discuss it, and then before we take the vote on it, suddenly we could move to have a hold on it post-hold until after our, if we were to...
No, because you're either putting it in the school budget, or you're not. If you discuss it in Article Eight, okay, if you, if you move to pass discussing Article Eight first, okay, and say for, for an argument's sake, it passes, that amount is no longer in Article Two. Okay? Because in Article Two... Because in Article Two, it's within the school budget. What he wants to do is discuss Article Eight outside of the budget and act on it before the budget is acted on.
But then when we go back to Article Two, we could recall, we could redo, we'd discuss it, we could have another vote on Article Eight.
No. Well, your question is, I don't know what's going to happen if we do Article Eight next. Okay? Now, what is your question? Does Article Eight fails to pass?
Well, let's say Article Eight fails to pass, and then the amount would be different from Article Two. Then we'd have an article to have some discussion, making the determination that perhaps we were hasty in our decision in Article Eight.
That amount's taken out.
Mr. Moderator.
That amount is taken out of the school budget, okay? And therefore will be removed when I read Article Two.
Okay, in that case, I would suggest that town not take it out of Article Two. And it would be part of Article Two.
You would support not voting, make the move. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, this is more of a procedural thing. Had we put this before Two, we would discuss it first. This isn't going to change the amounts, but it does give us an opportunity to talk about Article Eight first. It shouldn't change any numbers at all.
The amounts won't change, it's just a question of whether it's within the school budget or outside of the school budget. Yes?
Merle Seeman, I think if everybody turns to page twelve, you should focus.
I have no idea what that is. Is that Article Eight?
Article Two, if you turn to page twelve, way down the bottom it says, "Tell the district to let it fill out," right? And over on the side it says, "To place this Article Eight." So this is what he's talking about, huh? So this is going to come out if we do this first.
This is what will happen. If he wants to discuss Article Eight, and we vote to allow him to discuss Article Eight, and Article Eight passes, let's say it does, it means that amount that you just cited disappears.
Yep, that's exactly.
Right. Okay? As I said earlier to Mr. Markson, it's whether you want it within the school budget or separate from the school budget.
I just want to ensure everyone understands what Article Eight is about. Prior to having to simply disappear in this.
Well, we can do that if we decide to do it.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of moving Article Eight to the next item on the agenda, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to moving Article Eight, please raise your cards. I see a few cards, only. I declare that this motion is passed, and we now act on Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Aaron Burke. I am the local school committee chairman. And I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred twenty-six thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars to cover the cost for tuition for special education students enrolled in out-of-district placements.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Would you please speak to it?
Yes, my name is Aaron Burke. I live on Bond Street. Article Eight essentially will keep the way that special education for out-of-district students is funded in Lakeville the way it is currently. If the budget, if Article Two passed before this did, it would fundamentally change the way funding is appropriated to the local schools by putting the out-of-district special ed costs as part of the local school budget. The school committee took a vote on this and were opposed to this, and we would like to see Article Eight pass so that we can maintain the process by which out-of-districts ed costs are archived. Thanks.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? I believe you do. You're recommending it? You voted to disapprove at the warrant article meeting unless you've changed your mind since. The Finance Committee disapproves. Yes, sir.
My name's Robert Dunn. I live at Eighteenth Mount Congress Street. And I'd just like to give a little history of why this particular article is outside of the regular local school budget. I was on the school committee from nineteen seventy-nine, and that's until nineteen seventy-six, I think, until nineteen eighty-nine. And during the eighties, we had the local school budget encompassing the Assawamse School. The school committee also had within that budget the town's responsibility for all out-of-district and special education costs, pre-K through grade four. We also had within the local school budget all vocational school costs. This is prior, obviously, to Lakeville becoming a full-time school. In terms of the special education appropriation, what we found at that time, the local school committee, was that decisions were being made K through four in Assawamse regarding special education services, including out-of-district placements. For Lakeville children in grades five through twelve, the decision about their placements would be made at the regional district level, even though the cost of that placement was not coming out of the regional district, it was coming out of the local budget. Now, the administration argued that we were represented by the special ed director, who was an employee of Lakeville Free Town and the region. But primarily, the decision being made about out-of-district special education placements and transportation costs were made at the regional level for five through twelve, and the bill was sent to the local school committee. So after two years of really, and this was resisted by the Finance Committee at the time, I don't know whether the school cameras probably cared, but I think Richard can appreciate that Walton, Healy, and I gave him pretty much a hard time. But two years it took for the town to pass separating the special education out-of-district placement costs outside of the local school budget, so that we could deal with it as a separate appropriation matter without a negative impact after the budget, after the local budget was approved, you know, at the Assawamse. So that's the history of that. I would strongly recommend, and I strongly support, that things aren't changed, because I only see it going back to what we were dealing with, you know, twenty-five years ago with respect to decisions being made outside of the local parameters of the local school committee and coming back and impacting their budget.
So you support Article Eight?
I support Article Eight, thank you.
Kim George, Baker Lane. I'm with this gentleman here. I also support Article Eight. As he mentioned, the local budget is K through four, and the special ed budget is K through age of twenty-two. Right now, the special ed out-of-district budget has been in effect, I believe, nine years. And eight out of those nine years, it has been a negative. So to move that into the local budget and have us put that on a smaller scale school, K through four, would just set itself up to be. Thank you.
Phil? Phil, please.
So I support the separation of funding for those two specific items because it gets very complex, and you want to make sure that you're appropriating the monies for the right uses. And so I would support Article Eight staying at this table.
Nancy?
In all fairness to the Finance Committee, which we have two new members on the Finance Committee, and actually, out of the five, I think the longevity is two years. So we have a new Finance Committee. And in all fairness to them, it was the Board of Selectmen that discussed adding the spend budget into the regular budget. Free Town did it like that, and at the time, we were discussing full regionalization, thought it was a step in the direction, in that direction. So in fairness to them, I think that we didn't realize how opposed the schools were to it, and when we talked about it, nobody spoke up too much. I mean, they didn't look too pleased, but nobody really spoke up. So I just want to be fair to the Finance Committee, that they went along with Board of Selectmen, that it was us that made that decision. And as I said here, I'm not sure myself that that was the right decision. So it will be up to you to vote on it.
You're the last one.
I'm Brenda Levin. I live at Thirty-Five Pilgrim Road. And I happen to work in Free Town, at the school in Free Town. I live in Lakeville, and I've talked to some of my peers in Free Town, and they said, "I can't believe you guys have been doing this. We're trying to undo this. It's the worst mistake we ever made." So I just wanted to throw that in here, and I don't know if I can simplify it anymore, but just to say, it's, I know we need to pay the out-of-district, and that they are Lakeville kids, but we would be taking it out of Assawamse to pay fifth grade through twelfth graders, which are regional, not Lakeville, not Assawamse. So it would cost my kids money for kids that are in region, and the region should pay for that. And when we're fully regionalized, we won't have these problems anymore. But until then, we need to keep it separate. Thank you.
Steve, okay. Is it new? Okay, be quick.
As many of you may know, we are in the process of regionalizing K through twelve. And we thought this would be a step in the right direction to move towards that. Keep in mind, we can vote tonight to keep this in Article Eight, but eventually it's going to be regionalized if we move there, and it will all be part of one budget.
Okay, Bob Mosh, Barstow Street. Steve, you've said a couple of times here that we are in the process of regionalizing. It's my understanding that we're in the process of investigating whether we want to regionalize. I think there's a big difference, because a lot more has to be proven to me before we vote that.
Sorry for that. Yes?
So I guess there must be, we're talking about regionalization.
No, we're not talking about regionalization at all. At all.
Seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars is what to move into the school budget as a goal forward to regionalization.
No, no. Regionalization is not part of it, except with what Steve indicated, okay? This is just simply putting money in the budget to fund special needs all by itself, not within the local budget. That's what this is about.
Understood.
Regionalization is not even being discussed.
And I guess maybe that's the point, right? It's not even being discussed.
No, in this article.
Why should we move to move that seven hundred twenty-six thousand dollars into the local budget when the region's budget isn't even in discussion here? We're not going to call, we're trying to regionalize?
Right.
And that money's, as you said, a step in the right direction for regionalization, and we're not close to regionalizing.
Yeah, that's what Bob said. Okay, let's move to a vote, please. I think we've said it. And I don't mean to put the last person down, because I was talking about regionalization isn't in it. But we keep bringing up regionalization, and all we're talking about is a special education budget. All in favor of Article Two, Article Eight, I'm sorry. Please raise your cards. It's a majority vote. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to voting for Article Eight, please raise your cards. I see no cards. Oh, I see two, I'm sorry. The vote is everyone but two. Three. I declare it passed by majority vote. We don't go, now go to Article Two. Please nobody leave, okay? Don't do what Mr. Markson said might happen. We vote to Article Two. God forbid, indeed, I don't want you to be right. Article Two. Someone going to introduce Article Two. And we're going to have a few changes as we go through, because we're going to take a piece out, as we know.
I move to appropriate eleven million eight hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars. Appropriate one hundred thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars from state cash. Transfer and appropriate seventy-three thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars from the water infrastructure improvements stabilization fund. Transfer and appropriate one thousand dollars from the debt reductions by capital improvements stabilization fund. Transfer and appropriate one hundred thousand dollars from out-of-district number four special town meeting due in fifteen two thousand and nine. Transfer and appropriate sixteen thousand four hundred eight dollars from the Massachusetts Water Protection and Safety Trust. Transfer and appropriate ten thousand dollars from the Central County Trust. Appropriate seventy-eight thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars to Park Enterprise and raise twenty-three thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars from Park Enterprise receipts. Transfer thirty thousand dollars from the Rock Retained Earnings and raise twenty-five thousand dollars from the Tax Lending. Appropriate four hundred five thousand one hundred dollars to Landville Enterprise and raise two hundred sixty-five thousand one hundred dollars from the Landville Enterprise receipts. And transfer one hundred forty thousand dollars from Landville Enterprise retained earnings. Appropriate one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars to the Water Enterprise Fund and transfer one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars from the Water Infrastructure Improvements and Stabilization Fund. Appropriate town expenses for the fiscal period July first, two thousand and ten to June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, inclusive.
Second. Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Since you read it, I think you're in favor of it.
That would be direct.
Thank you. I have to do what I have to do, which means I'm going to read the totals on the line items. If you have a hold on anything, you shout out "hold", but I do expect you to come up and tell me why later on. Are we ready? Selectment personnel, two hundred and twenty-three thousand five seventy-five. I thought you said "hold". Selectment expenses, thirteen thousand. Finance committee expenses, nine hundred. Accounting personnel, one hundred six thousand eight hundred seventeen. Accounting expenses, sixty-nine thousand and ninety-five. Assessors personnel, one hundred seven thousand nine hundred eighty-one. Assessors expenses, twenty-three thousand two hundred and twenty. Charger and collector personnel, one hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred thirty-six. Charger and collector expenses, thirty-two thousand six hundred. Labor expenses, thirty thousand. A total of agent personnel board, six hundred. Thank you. Town clerk personnel, forty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-five. Town clerk expenses, one thousand three hundred and eighty. Election expenses, fifteen thousand eight hundred. Registration expenses, eight thousand eight hundred and fifty. Conservation commission personnel, fourteen thousand five hundred. Conservation commission expenses, zero. Planning board expenses, one hundred and fifty. Appeals board expenses, three hundred. Historic townhouse expenses, four thousand five hundred. Town office and fire station expenses, one hundred twenty-six thousand. Town report expenses, five hundred. Cable TV advisory expenses, five thousand. Other government general expenses, eleven thousand and two. Police department personnel, one million one hundred and eight thousand six hundred and one. Police department expenses, one hundred fifty-eight thousand six hundred. Fire department personnel, seven hundred eighty-two thousand four hundred fifty-seven. Fire department expenses, eighty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-five. Building inspector personnel, one hundred three thousand four hundred eighty-seven. Building inspector expenses, five thousand two hundred. Gas inspector expenses, eleven thousand. Homing inspector expenses, sixteen thousand five hundred. Seal or weights and measures expenses, one thousand six hundred. Electoral inspector expense, twenty-two thousand. Animal inspector expense, six thousand. Civil defense personnel, zero. Civil defense expenses, one thousand. Civil defense expenses, one thousand. Animal shelter dog officer personnel, seventy-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four. Animal shelter dog office expenses, seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty. Total school K through four, this four million and one seventy-one three thirty. I want, I expect us to hold on that because this, that amount's going to change. And you can figure it out while I'm going through the rest.
Mr. Moderator, you had five, you said, yes, there'd be a hold on that.
Well, it says five, one seven one three three zero.
Yeah, but you said four.
I'm sorry. Highway department personnel, four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. Highway department expenses, eighty-nine thousand three thirty-five. Snow and ice personnel, ten thousand, ten thousand. Snow and ice expenses, thirty thousand. Street lighting expenses, fourteen thousand. Cemetery services expenses, ten thousand. Board of health personnel, one hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-four. Board of health expenses, eight thousand one hundred. Board of health visiting nurse expense, two thousand. Council on aging personnel, one hundred thousand nine hundred and forty-six. Council on aging expense, nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy. Veterans benefits personnel, five thousand three hundred and fifty-seven. Veterans benefits expenses, thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty. Library personnel, one hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-one. Library expenses, eight two thousand three hundred and five. Total historic library building, thirty-five hundred. Historic commission expenses, four hundred and fifty. Total debt service, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and forty-three. Regional assessment expense, one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven. Unemployment? I know, on purpose. I was told so by the town accountant. That one sixty-nine seven eighty is not to be read. Is that true, Cindy? It's a memo. Unemployment expenses, fifty thousand. I'm sorry? Unemployment expenses, hold. Total employee benefits, two million fifty-three thousand seven hundred and one. Total property and liability insurance, one hundred and ninety thousand. Park enterprise personnel, twenty-five thousand and fifty-nine. Park enterprise expense, fifty-three thousand one hundred. Total park enterprise revenue, seventy-eight thousand one fifty-nine. Landfill transfer enterprise personnel, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty. Landfill transfer enterprise expense, two hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy. Landfill transfer cap expense, twenty thousand. Total landfill enterprise revenues, minus four hundred and five thousand one hundred. That's because it's coming out of something. Water expense enterprise personnel, twenty-two thousand eight hundred. Water enterprise expense, one hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred. Total water enterprise revenues, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and ninety-five thousand. And that is budget except for two votes. Three votes maybe. First hold I have is on wage and personnel board, six hundred dollars. Nancy?
Okay. If you noticed, what you were reading, Gordon, was the budget without raises to all departments. The raises to all departments were, are ninety-eight thousand six hundred and four. We would like to add that to the wage and personnel, six hundred thousand, for a total of ninety-nine two oh four. For union and non-union raises are under further consideration.
So you're putting under wage and personnel board?
So it will be available at the time of the termations are made.
So the amount is changed from six hundred to ninety-nine comma two oh four?
Yes.
Thank you. You want to ask her why again?
No, explain that again, please.
Okay, explain it, please.
Those are the raises, the union and non-union. It hasn't, the decision hasn't been made yet, and so it's further consideration. We're taking those raises and putting them on the side, under wage and personnel. We do have a fire memorandum of agreement with the fire department and police department. And the decisions for the non-union have not been made yet. So we're putting all that money to wage and personnel until we decide how it's going to go. You going to say it's different than that, Derek?
In other words, you're not spending it, you're just putting it in an account and deciding to spend it later. Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
We're still in contract negotiations and that fairly ends it all. We just haven't decided what it's going to be yet.
Yes, Phil? So would you need a motion and a second to vote for that or is that just somebody you can read in?
Yes, you're going to have to move that and have to. For that, but people are still asking questions. No, it's just that they don't change their mind.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll move to a vote. This is technically, it's an amendment. All in favor of changing that amount from six hundred to ninety-nine thousand two hundred and four, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to doing so, please raise your cards. I see a few opposition. I declare that the amendment has passed by majority vote. We move to the next hold. There is a change on the total school K through four because we took, we're going to take out an amount equal to what Article Eight was so that that total is going to change downward. Do you have that total? What is it, please? The amount now is four million four hundred and forty-five thousand zero three seven, for those of you who'd like to write it down. Four comma four four five comma zero three seven. It's diminished by the amount that Article Eight passed by. Okay? All in favor of, any more discussion on that? I mean, it's a simple deduction. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. I declare that that has passed. There was one opposition. It's still a majority vote, but not unanimous. We move to... I'm sorry, I looked down there and I didn't see a card. Waive it. We have a hold on unemployment for fifty thousand. Yes, sir?